All right, at six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, we'll do roll call. Board one, Kevin Loy.
Here.
And Board two, Joel and Kestie is out sick tonight. If anybody'd like to make a motion to excuse her, I'd entertain that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Board three, Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
I'm present. Councilman Cock.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Labaka.
Here.
All right. And we'll move on to introduction of special guests and presentation. Charlie, would you like to take this one?
Yeah, we don't have any special guests or presentations this evening, but I do have the item under new business, exploration of developing a regional fire authority. So if you want me to, I can dive right into that.
Yes, please, thanks.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, so wrote up an item for this agenda, and I'll just provide a little bit of background from the write-up. So when we were working with Fire District Eight on a new interlocal agreement where the city provides services to Fire District Eight, one of the conversations that came up kind of in passing was the possibility maybe someday of having discussions about forming a regional fire authority between District Eight and the city. And we kind of set that aside and said, you know, let's finish these negotiations and we can talk about it after the fact. And so we did that recently, just a couple of weeks ago. I had a conversation with Fire Commissioner Jim Kennedy, and he let me know that there... He was going to go back and check with his board, but he believed there was sufficient interest from the board in possibly exploring a regional fire authority. And what that would mean is some kind of joint study, where we would have an interlocal agreement. We would hire a consultant to do a study to look at the ins and outs and the potential of doing such a thing. And so I'm coming to you tonight. There were several mentions of it during negotiations. I'm coming to you tonight, just to explore the possibility, see if you would want to even look at an interlocal agreement that might allow for such a study to occur. I talked with Commissioner Kennedy about splitting the cost 50/50 if we were to do a study. We don't have a cost on the study yet, so our next steps would be to go do some more research on that and then draft up an interlocal agreement, which would be very simple. And then we would come back to you for potential action on that. If we proceeded on that, then we would all get a lot more information on what it might look like. I also included in the packet a background, some background on what a regional fire authority is. It's a separate local government that gets created to provide fire service. And it can be structured in a variety of ways, including its board. Its board could be directly elected, or its board could be blended with fire commissioners and city council members. There are a lot of ways to do it, and there are a lot of different ways to put regional fire authorities together. There are big regional fire authorities out there that have many districts in them and many cities in them. There are others that are more simple, like this one might be if it was created. It requires a vote of the people. So essentially what happens is we would do a feasibility study, have conversations with both elected bodies based on that. If there was sufficient interest, we would need to put together then an actual plan for how it would function, how it would work. And then that plan would be something that would be voted on by both the commissioners and the council. If the plan was supported, then it would go to the voters, and it requires a vote of all the people who would be within the area of the regional fire authority. Typically, these can be set up in ways that are tax neutral, so that essentially the city's property taxes would drop and the districts would change as well, and that the money would then get pooled to the new regional fire authority. That's a very simplistic version of it. If we hired consultants, they would break it down for you in a lot more detail, and there are some other nuances and options to it. Benefits of doing it, one of them would be economies of scale. When you totally combine operations, you can be more efficient, and as you get bigger, you can get more efficient. And we do a lot of regional service provision in partnership with District Eight as it is. So it would have the potential to just make that more seamless even than it is today. So just wanted to get this in front of you as an idea. It's something that came up. I thought it was...I know a couple of council members have mentioned it kind of in passing in discussions we've had. And I want to turn it over to the chief, who's actually taken a course on regional fire authority. So he's got even more detail than I have.
Yeah, I think this has kind of been brought up many times over the last decade or two. We looked at this about 15 years ago, and from my understanding, the recommendation at the end of that study was that it was more...there was no benefit to either party at that time to move forward because we had a contract for services and it was working great for both. I think as costs are going up, call volumes going up, the legislation and laws and taxing rules around this stuff have changed a lot over those last 10 or 15 years. About seven or eight years ago, we actually sat down with all of our electeds here in the town, as well as their commissioners, when we started this process, to kind of look and see if we were...if things had changed and we should head down that road at that time. And then I think a month later, COVID happened and everything got tabled. I think at this point, I don't know enough about the ins and outs of everything quite yet. There's so many nuances as far as the taxing, the control, the governing bodies, the planning that goes with this, fire benefit charges, how codes and ordinances relate to the two entities as they become one and what it looks like if maybe other entities want to join as well. So I think if this is something that is worth your time to look at, then we probably owe it to ourselves in District Eight to move forward and have some folks come in and study this and give us the...all the answers to those questions and kind of see what it's going to look like to our constituents and see what it's going to look like as far as the growth and the future of both entities. Because I think as District Eight is seeing that, you know, the majority of their call volume is happening in and around the city of Siege Woolley, and they don't have the building with the brick and mortar there or the personnel to handle that quite yet, and the cost of all that's going up. So I think by sharing that burden, whether it be the cost of the buildings, the maintenance, the vehicles, the apparatus, and purchasing in the future as far as how that all works. Survey and ratings, as you all know, looks at our water sources, our equipment, our personnel, to include staffing, our dispatch center, how many backup rigs we have, how many personnel we have available to run on these calls, and that goes into your insurance ratings. And I think if you have...if this is done right, we could probably positively affect that on a broader scale for a better cost, short term and long term. But how do we present that as far as the legalities and stuff, as far as the taxation, and what we just did with our levy-lid lift, and what that looks for our constituents and theirs at the same time? I think it makes sense for us to get the right answers before we, you know, jump off the cliff together, if that makes any sense.
Councilman Allen? If...may I ask you a question?
Good.
Thank you very much. I just had a question. I think it's a good idea to explore this, for sure, and I'm glad that you are. It'll probably save us some money in the long run, is my assessment, or just my view from...I understand 15 years ago, we were a bit smaller and we had a lot more volunteers. But right now, we're probably looking at this would be viable asset to our community. The thing I'm wondering is, will they also do a lot of the statistical data, the analytic data, to figure out like how many calls are going which way? We started on that process. You have some good data on that, too. A little while ago when we talked, it was...we didn't quite have that data, but we kind of realized 40 people are making 40% of the calls roughly. That's a lot of funding from the fire department. If you look at all the overall funding, I know a lot goes to fires and ambulance, so it's not all of that 40% of funding, but it's a lot of resources. So as...I would imagine they would probably be willing to partner as well with your idea to bring in somebody to kind of help mitigate those social-type calls and then see how we can reduce costs there. So would that be part of this to see how we could also reduce the overall cost of...if we were to combine?
I think the biggest thing there is the answer would be yes, because no matter where you are, small, big, everybody's going to have those same issues and concerns that we have. And right now, globally, as far as...well, not globally, but countywide, we're having that issue across the board, and that North Star project is dealing with a lot of that stuff right now. And we're trying to pull those resources, kind of like what we're trying to do with Burlington and ourselves, is to drive some of those down. And we would be able to affect some of those same folks that are happening in District Eight, or even Clear Lake, or, you know, east of us in Lyman and Hamilton and up there as well. So yeah, I think you hit the...hit it right on the nail...the head right on the...yeah, whatever. Nail on the head, yeah. Because overall, your staffing is going to be your biggest cost along with your, you know, long-term ER and R and equipment. But the call volume's going to continue to go up. So if you can manage those resources to be able to handle those secondary and tertiary calls, you know, it's going to benefit everybody. And I think if this is going to work, it makes the most sense for us with a Fire District Eight because of our long history and ability to work together. I mean, we've been doing it for 50 years plus. So it's kind of like we're already, you know, family. So if it's going to work with anyone, it's going to be best for the two of us right off the bat.
And then just one more question, and that would be in regards to volunteer firefighters. Are we...are we looking at a way to campaign for that? I know that you guys are campaigning, and I do see the signs, but to really aggressively get in there, campaign. I did mention possibly at some point setting up some bleachers when we do firefighter training over there near the high school. But just get kids engaged, get the youth engaged, really campaign. Because that was a real big staple, way bigger than anywhere else that I've ever been, is our volunteer firefighters were the majority of our force around here. So is there a campaign for that?
I think, you know, our partnership with the high school, with the fight program, the colleges, our resident program, we're one of the few around that have that, where you can come right out of high school and move into the fire station and volunteer with us. I think as many volunteers as we possibly can get, we want. Right now, we are at 42 persons in the department, and only 19 of those are full-time. So between the three chiefs and the new folks that we brought on, so 23 of our folks are those volunteers. We have eight that are on probation. We have one that just started the academy in Waukesha right now as we speak. And we have three volunteers that have come in from the outside that already had credentials. So we're doing a lot better than we had in the past. Where we would have testing processes that netted zero, or no one would even sign up to do the test. And the last couple of testings, we've had six to eight on the applications, anyway. We had five or six that actually showed up. So it's...we're getting better, and I think a lot of that is we're seeing a little bit of a plateau in the hiring in the region post-COVID, because a lot of those positions from retirements and stuff are filled. And some of these other regional fire authorities down south, their 50, 60-plus students in their academies are kind of coming to an end, where they were doing three or four of those a year. Now I think they're doing one or two a year. So our competition's getting better, but it's still tough. You know, when you have brand-new entry-level folks that are making 120 grand a year down south, and we're offering a great program as far as an internship to learn that stuff as a volunteer or a resident here. But at, you know, an apartment and 16 bucks a call is hard to compete when with no experience they can get hired at some of these bigger places and have a career from day one, so.
Chief, this sounds interesting. An eye on the surface until we know about costs for the study, et cetera. Think it sounds like a good idea. A couple of questions. One, I think you told me before, there's those ones, the regionals down south are pretty competitive with our firefighters. So that would, I would think, be one asset. Are there any other regional systems in this county, or we...or not?
There is one that just started here this last year, and that is Grassmere, Birdsview, and District 19 out of Marble Mount or Rockport. They are the first regional fire authority in Skagit County. So they are brand-new.
Okay. And how do you think...it's probably a hard question to ask right now. How would the union regard something like this?
I think you're seeing most of your labor groups around the region are pushing for this because they're seeing the benefits of, you know, the regionalization as far as the sharing of resources gives them better buying power, better benefits packages, and better training resources to share across all those boundaryless districts and municipalities.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. I'm aware that this has been up for discussion for the last 15-plus years, and it's something that has been and will continue to come up and, quite honestly, is likely very inevitable in the relationship and situation that we currently have with District Eight. So with that in mind and knowing that we'll be updated on what the pricing and all of that could be for the consultants and review, I am completely open to reviewing and seeing where this goes and listening to how this could all shake out for both parties, pros and cons. Thank you.
Just quick question. Staff time to get us to that point where we're talking to a consultant, looking at a price.
It shouldn't be too rough.
Okay.
Interlocal agreement's going to be pretty straightforward and just doing some basic research. So maybe 10 hours, something like that. I don't know exactly. But I'm going to meet with Kennedy again, and then we'll go from there, do some research, and then start drafting stuff up.
Okay. The questions I expect I could get answered tonight have already been answered for the most part. I'm open to exploring this. I just want to make sure that we look at what's going to end up with our staff, if we're going to end up needing more staff if that happens, less, looking at the volunteers that are available. The long-term issues that you see, hurdles that are going to come up later on, try to...I know it's looking your crystal ball, but look at other authorities maybe that have done this so that we can kind of plan for the future and make sure we have a contract that's going to work long-term for the city and the district. And taxes, just any kind of change that that's going to end up causing to the taxpayers. I think we should definitely make sure we're as clear as we can with them on that. So, thank you.
At the last North Star meeting, I sat with the Mount Vernon group, who happened to have the chief of...the fire chief sitting there, explaining all of the regional fire system and how Mount Vernon only had a couple of years left where they'll be able to afford the fire system that they've got now. And they're going to talk about regionalize with everybody. And I've thought for a long time that that's where we're headed, and that's probably the only road we got down in the future. So I think it would be an excellent idea to start picking away at it and learning about it.
I just had a couple of questions. And these will probably all be answered by the consultants if we get them. I'd like to see how much it costs for a consultant, and then we could go that route for sure. This is kind of the way that a lot of the larger markets down south do this, like Redmond, stuff like that. So and I think Marysville's starting to get into this, too, even though they were a pretty big fish, but now they're having to start to branch out and have this discussion, too. So a few of the things that would...that a consultant would probably be able to answer for us as far as local governmental control, there would likely need to be a board, a regional fire authority board. And I saw that they're already...the county is putting those out for elected positions this time around, and it looks like they're all up in concrete. So that's probably the one you were talking about, Chief. Elections are expensive. It costs each entity money to have these people elected. So if this was a board comprised of people who were already elected as representatives, that might be...that might be a more financially feasible cost because some of these positions that go into elections that cost upwards of $25,000 for the tax base to have that person go out for their election. Speaking of call volume, would we lose our...would we lose our bill for the calls that we're responding to in Fire District Eight? It's a possibility, but the tax base might shift a little bit. So that's something that I'd like to see. Hopefully, it wouldn't be a loss of revenue for the city. The Siege Woolley Fire Department are all City of Siege Woolley employees. If we entered a...if we entered a regional fire authority, would all those guys still be City of Siege Woolley employees covered under our insurance? And would their benefits package change? Stuff like that. I mean, those finer details are going to be, you know, what really makes us want to take this to the voters or say this is a bad deal for everybody involved. So but I would like to see how much that would cost. Does anybody have anything else?
I think I can answer a couple of those things right off the bat. And in the research that I've done and looking at some of the classes I've gone to, if you do an actual fire authority, then you're going to create a whole new entity. And that entity is going to take care...they're going to work for that, whether it's, you know, Cascades, Fire Authority, whatever they call it. And in the beginning initial stages, we would have three of you folks or three electeds. So it could be any one of the...any one of the three, including, I guess, the mayor as well, would represent the city. Three of the commissioners from the district would be on there as well as far as a planning phase. And then in the future, that whole setup of how they form their governance board and model will have representatives from both. But all the employees would then be a part of that authority, providing services to the city and the district as one. So it would be like we would have a contract with that authority to handle all that stuff, and they would no longer be direct employees of the City of Siege Woolley at all. So any of that revenue or whatever would go away.
Could the city or the union guarantee them the same benefits packages that they have now? Or are these guys going to go kicking and screaming out the door?
No, that would be part of that whole governance model. So normally, they would assume the bargaining labor contracts and be a part of that initial phases. So when you start one of these, you would get the labor groups together, and they would in the initial phases...I mean, this could take a year and a half, two years, three years, sometimes even more, depending on the agencies that are involved. So you get them in the infancy stages and deal with your wages and benefits and all that stuff before you even turn everything over so that everybody knows they have employment and knows what the contracts are going to look like. And you don't go backwards. You take care of the people.
Okay. So what do you guys want to do?
You're just getting a quote, right? I mean, that's what this is about, like the approval to go forward, to get the quote, bring it back and say that it's consultants, $200,000, or 500, or 50. You know, we don't know. So until we have that, that's basically...
Yeah, there are a couple of things that would occur. One is we would draft up an interlocal agreement, which we would just need to jointly share the cost of a study. And two, we'll do some outreach to try to get a sense for the cost of a study. And then in that interlocal agreement, we would put a price break in there and probably not to exceed a mountain. And that's we come back and talk with you about what we heard. Might be a little bit premature to actually pick a consultant at this point because I think there'll be more discussion that may inform that selection.
Councilwoman Diamond?
We also check in with Mount Vernon and see what they're talking about for the future. Because, I mean, he was dead serious when I was listening to him. He said they only had a few years left before they...
Yeah, I guess question to council, question to chief. I mean, thoughts on that?
I'm not opposed to anything. You tell me you want me to do something, we'll look at it.
Chief, if I may, I mean, we're sitting in good shoes. We've seen the budget, we've seen your task force. But just to ensure, we're not at a council or at a meeting event and discussing things like that at a table that we're in that same position, are we? We're not in any position like that at all. Okay, it's always good to be in the higher ground, I guess. Thanks.
Councilwoman Diamond, what's your recommendation?
I'm willing to move forward with exploration of this information. And in doing so, I'd like to see a 50...I would like to see what the cost of that would be so that we can get that approved for budget. Are we going to need a budget amendment for that?
We probably...we may. It depends on the amount. Yeah, we'll have to get back to that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd make a motion to explore the development of the regional fire authority with administration coming back and providing us with a quote for the consultant fees in additional direction.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilwoman Diamond. Second from Councilwoman Burns, any discussion?
Just one thing. If the council doesn't mind, I actually like what Kevin Loy was suggesting. Councilmember Loy has a good idea because if there's other municipalities that are looking at this, it sounds like bigger is better when it comes to these as far as getting employees. Should...would it be prudent for us to reach out to other districts and say we are considering exploring this? Or would that just make it so complex it would never happen?
I think there are two ways to think about that. I think you nailed it pretty well. It does make it more complex. And so before we start reaching out to other jurisdictions, I'd want to talk with District Eight a little bit because I think, at least in our initial conversations with them, there was some sense that we work together so closely. This is something we could do together. The more partners you bring in, the more perspectives you gain. And that can make it a little bit harder to get on the same page. That said, if you have more jurisdictions in the mix, you have the potential for greater savings and bigger benefits. So you can also gradually build these. That's something that's important to keep in mind, and we hear about this happening all the time in other counties where agencies, cities just decide to join an existing RFA, and so do districts, and they kind of just gradually build out. So that's also an option.
Okay. Can I follow up? So I also like Councilmember Loy's idea. And we work...you know, something maybe...I understand the gradual approach. Maybe this is our first step. You know, we...if it's viable, we go with that and then consider future. But we're...you know, the observation is we already work very closely with Burlington Fire. I mean, you know, it's something to consider as well. Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Yes.
So I would...I'm thinking maybe we should hold off on that, in my personal opinion. And the reason why is Mount Vernon's not necessarily our neighbor, right? I mean, they're neighborly, and we love them. They're wonderful, they're part of Skagit. But it's not like they're right next door. District Eight, we've been working with for many years. We want to see Mount Vernon's, you know, greatly supported. And if we did that, it would only make sense to loop in Burlington or others that are in the way, not have this giant gap in the middle. So I think the cost of consultants for going that direction may increase greatly. And so even tapping on that might just be an unwise use of time. So they can chime in and get with Chief Wagner. And then if you want to come back and say, hey, you know, this guy clicked my ear for, you know, something with Mount Vernon during this process, that's great. We'd love to hear it, but I don't think we should focus ourselves on it. Thanks.
Next time you guys are at a chief's meeting, maybe talk to Rob Toth and see what's going on, if they're thinking about it. You see those guys all the time, right? Yeah. So do we got any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right.
Counselman Henderson?
Yes.
Before we go into public comment, I was hoping to get a point of personal privilege.
Go on.
All right, so two things that have come up. One was, um, the events. I know, and I'm grateful that Charlie responded to my email, but the mayor will be bringing this up on the fourteenth. I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community on that. Um, I've been in a lot of the parades around here, and the organizers feel like they are, been kinda shafted in that end. So I'm glad, grateful we're gonna talk about that and figure out a way to support those guys. That's what my, uh, opinion is, I'm sure you, I was told that they reached out to a number of council people. So being able to see that discussion and find a way to support our main parades, our main events, uh, Blaster Pass, Christmas, Veterans, that was a big one, and then of course, Fourth of July rodeo. The other thing is, um, to add to the discussion, um, the building downtown that's on Metcalf and Woodworth, and that's the white one, we gave a grant to, to paint white, right? I would like to explore the idea, with the council's permission, or at least, uh, have Charlie explore it, could we figure out a way to fund, out of the strategic planning fund, um, the painting of that building, as long as we provide the color scheme, and we provide all of the aspects of it, because it is a massive eyesore that's within all reality, legal as can be. And so, um, we're getting ready to go into this season, and I feel like this is why it's important to discuss now, otherwise I would've waited till a committee. But we're getting ready to have Fourth of July right downtown. We're getting ready to have all these people in town, and that thing is not what I think anybody intended to, when the grant program was formed. So if there's any way we can explore that discussion, or I'd love to hear your guys' views on it. It would obviously be upon the business owner's approval, but I bet you they would, they wouldn't mind. I don't know.
Uh, I, I, just an observation that, uh, I, I'm not, certainly not opposed to that idea, because when it's done well, uh, it highlights our community. Uh, look at the Kinsey Building, I don't know if anybody saw the recent painting there, it's, it's nice, you know? So, sure, I, I, I'm not opposed to that idea.
Yeah, I'd be open to exploring that as well. It's definitely not what I had in mind, uh, the end result when we started doing the grant program, so, thank you.
Would you look into that, Charlie?
Yes.
Or Tom, could you guys work together on that? And, you know, you know the building.
Yep, we know exactly what you mean, we, we know the project, we know the history. Uh, we'll look into it, we'll get back to you next week on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the, for the privilege.
Thanks. All right, so now we're gonna move on to public comments. Uh, please keep your comments, three minutes or less, uh, because state law prohibits the use of facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot position. We respectfully request that public comment be not made, not make reference to such matters. Um, do we have anybody in the chambers that would like to give public comment? Yes, sir?
Twenty years I've watched every single mayor in this town.
Can you come up to the?
For twenty years I've watched every single mayor in this town, every member on the city council.
Sorry to interrupt, sir. Can you turn on the mic?
Sorry. I'm not used to this, okay? I actually worked for a lady. Okay, for twenty years I've watched every mayor of this town, which, all four of them, and every member of the city council aspire to be more like Seattle. We build overpriced housing, putting more people out on the streets. We have Riverfront Park that was designed, where as long as you could afford a trailer, kept your nose clean, you could stay all season. Okay, it's putting more and more people on the streets, and you wanna complain about it. Meanwhile, people are paying out the ass, sorry for the language, barely making rent, and it comes to the fire department, if people weren't trying so hard to make rent, there would be more time on their schedule to where they could volunteer for the fire department. Every bit of it comes back to, why do we allow realtors to run a literal racketeering scheme when it comes to housing? You let them operate as property management, it's nationwide, let them operate as property management, limiting who can afford what, which just drives up costs everywhere else. I'm, I'm done, sorry.
Thank you.
No, I don't.
All right, do we have anybody else in the chambers that would like to give a public comment? Do we have anybody online? Do you see anybody, Woody?
Uh, if anybody online would like to, uh, say anything, uh, please raise your hand, and I will unmute you. I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand.
All right, thank you. With that, we will close public comment. And now we will move on to executive session, with a discussion with legal counsel, the legal risks or current or proposed actions, RCW forty-three dot three-zero dot one-one-zero one I. And we will be going into executive session for forty-five minutes, with a return time at seven seventeen? Nineteen. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Executive session has been extended to 7:30. The executive session has been extended to 7:40.
The executive session has been extended to 7:40. The executive session has been extended to 7:50. The executive session has been extended to 7:55. The executive session has been extended to 7:58. The executive session has been extended to 7:59. The executive session has been extended to 7:59.
Executive session has been extended to eight o'clock.
Okay, it is eight ten. We have returned from executive session. We took no action on anything tonight in executive session. And with that, we adjourn. Thank you.